Meeting in order, if you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, my friends, you actually have a revised agenda in front of you, just some minor changes to the meeting this evening. The first of which came under the discussion portion of our agenda. We were going to have a discussion about city sidewalks, but staff is not quite prepared to report back on that. So that will be coming at our next meeting on October the 20th. So that has been removed. And I think the only other change was that Terry added some dates and times for two upcoming work meetings. One will be on the 20th to discuss community events per policy, and then the second is on November the 10th, Celtic Festival wrap-up meeting, both beginning at 6:30 PM here in council chambers. And then Mr. Burgoyne has asked that bonding for retirement be added as a discussion item, so that will follow downtown parking and signage. And if there are no other additions to the agenda this evening, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I do want to note that it appears as though we do not have our friends from the Celine Touralets here this evening. We were going to present them with a proclamation. If they do not show up, we will work to make sure they're here on the 20th. Okay? So again, at this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Girbaugh, and I'll let Councilmember Rhodes be the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved as amended. There are no absences this evening, so we'll dispense with that. I'll ask one more time. I don't believe there's anyone from the Celine Touralets here, so again, we'll make sure that somebody is present on the 20th and be sure to recognize them for their accomplishments. So we'll proceed with the second presentation this evening, which is a presentation of a check from the Environmental Commission to the Fifth Corner. Who'd like to take the lead on that? David and Bruce? Excellent.
We have a small group here.
Wonderful. And lastly, you're also on the Environmental Commission, so why don't you come up? And Mary Hess, you're also on the Environmental Commission. And Connie, you're the recording secretary. You have a quorum here. Yeah. David, or Councilmember Rhodes, do you want to hand Bruce that cordless mic there? Just switch it on at the bottom. Bruce, you can use that. Yep, it's on.
Well, we represent the Celine Environmental Commission, and we're very happy tonight to present a check for $1,838.18 from the e-waste collection that happened a couple weeks ago to our only representative of the Fifth Corner. The other two were absent because of illness. So we're very happy to give you this check. Over 50,000 pounds of e-waste was collected in this event, and it's been a very good event for us.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you, Bruce. Would you like to say anything?
Uh...
You don't have to. No. There's not much to say. Well, let me just say, first of all, these electronic recycling events have sort of become a staple in town. People always expect them, they anticipate them, they benefit and value from them greatly. So we appreciate your work to coordinate and organize those. And conversely, I think it's great that you were able to provide some funding for another great organization and resource in our community. So congratulations to the both of you. Why don't we give everybody a round of applause?
I'd like to add, if I could, that this support check for the Fifth Corner is made possible not only by the efforts of the Environmental Commission and the Fifth Corner people who staff the e-waste, but also because of all the people who bring their electronic waste to the event. And so keep doing that, keep buying new Giswigs and whatever, and then bring your old stuff to the next one, because the next e-waste event will be the last Saturday of April, and it'll be here at City Hall, as it has been the last couple of years. So thank you all.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes, and thank you to the folks from the Environmental Commission for coming this evening. We appreciate that.
Mary.
We need to get a picture here. Okay, thank you all. We appreciate you being here this evening. Okay, we move on now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Please.
Mary Hess, and it would be on 14-205, which is the road diet traffic study. I appreciate that the council has put a lot of thought, a lot of voices, and a lot of different ideas. I personally feel, and as people I talked through to the city, citizens, they really feel that this is something that is not going to work with a three-lane possibility. The one thing that I looked through the contract was that when they're talking about possibly five lanes going to three, is the congestion and the traffic moving a lot slower. And this $15,000 contract does not include any air quality analysis, which means that the trucks that are diesel or whatever, and the things that are going to be slowed, and also the traffic going through, the emissions are going to, I believe, be high, and this is not going to be included in the study, which I think is important also. And as the state did say, this could possibly have a problem with ambulances and police cars and buses as far as the traffic congestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. We appreciate your comments. Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items? No? Okay. Then we move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
I'd like to remove e-bills.
What's the number, Mr. Roth?
It's the second one down. See minutes, see bills.
Oh, see bills, okay. That will be the first item then, under new business. So see bills has been removed, and it will proceed 14-201 on new business. Is there a motion then to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. I'll get you on the next one, Councilwoman Sibyl Koenig. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda is approved as amended. We move on to public hearing, item 14-200. This is MMI Engineering Solution IFT request. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 30th, 2014 memo from Business Ambassador Kathy Korfman. But actually, before we approve that one, we have Ms. Korfman and our guest from MMI Engineered come forward. Maybe Kathy, if you want to briefly talk about your memo, and then if the applicant cares to make a comment, we would welcome that as well.
We used the new personal property evaluation guideline to score this one. It's one of the new guidelines. They got one year, plus with the new property tax change that went into effect, any property bought after 12/31/2012 is automatically exempt in 2016. Now, you have Tom Elkington here. He can talk about what's going on at MMI.
Very good. Tom, we appreciate you being here.
Yeah, appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, we're adding some more machines, which will mean hiring a few more people, adding a couple of silos outside, that kind of thing. So we're growing, and business is good, and we appreciate the help on the, you know, the abatement of some of the taxes.
Very good. Are there questions for either staff or the applicant? No? Okay, thank you very much. If there's no discussion then, I would seek a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 30th memo from Business Ambassador Korfman.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Girbaugh is the second, seconded by Councilmember Burgoyne. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. I am now seeking a motion to open the public hearing at 7:43 PM.
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Girbaugh is the mover. Mr. Burgoyne is the second, to open the public hearing at 7:43. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now open. Anyone who would like to speak is requested to come to the podium, and you have a limit of three minutes per person. Are there any public comments?
Moved to close.
Been moved by Mr. Girbaugh to close, and we'll say 7:44. Mr. Burgoyne, Councilmember Burgoyne, will you be the second?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Public hearing is now closed. The last motion will be a motion to adopt or not to adopt the resolution approving the industrial facilities tax exemption certificate from MMI Engineered Solutions for a one-year period in the amount of $665,619 for personal property taxes.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you, Councilmember Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sibyl Koenig. Any discussion? No? Well, Tom, I would just say that I enthusiastically support this motion. We're very pleased and very impressed with the trajectory of your business, that you keep growing and doing great things, and so I think it's very exciting that you're adding equipment and going to be adding some personnel, and we wish you the best of luck, and please use us as a resource and a tool in the future if we can be of assistance.
Appreciate the fact.
Thank you, sir. If there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by Councilmember Burgoyne, seconded by Councilwoman Sibyl Koenig, to adopt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, and the first item is see bills. This will be a motion to approve the bills consisting of 130 payees in the amount of
So moved.
Moved by Girbaugh to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Mayor Protam Tahr?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Roth, did you have a question or comment, sir?
I have the question for, is with the Rec Center, very last page, item number 20668, page of Celine Main Street, $2,817.17, and the reason is Mastodon Mayhem. Can you explain that expense?
Ms. Bennett, would you be able to comment on that?
Yeah, give me one second.
Okay, take your time. Then just come to the podium if you wouldn't mind.
I believe it's reimbursement for registrations for the Mastodon Mayhem. What was the check number on that, Mr. Roth? The memo is to please reimburse the Celine Main Street for the Celine Parks and Recreation portion of the out-of-pocket expense and to split the profits of the Mastodon Mayhem. So any registrations for the Mastodon Mayhem for the Celtic Festival, the city, the Rec Center took in all the entry fees, and so, and then we also, the Rec Center also agreed to split the costs, so they did the accounting, said, here's all the registration, and then we're giving half of it back.
And it said, split the profits? What was our income? We never get an income statement.
Well, it's from, the income statement is attached to the bill, and I can copy that, but there was, income was $4,320 of online registrations, and then we reimbursed them the $2,817.
So we have a net gain?
Yes.
Does that go to the Rec Center or to our general fund?
To the Rec Center. They did, they handled all the, everything down there. They took all the call, they have the online payment and everything set up, so they handled all of it down there.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anything further, Councilmember Roth? That's it? No? Well, if there's nothing further then on this item, it's been properly moved by Councilmember Girbaugh, seconded by Mayor Protam Tahr, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 14-201. This is MML Annual Liability and Property Insurance Pool Renewal. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the annual renewal premium with the pool for a period, for a time period, excuse me, of September 1, 2014 through August 31, 2015, in an amount not to exceed $124,467.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Mayor Protam Tahr? Thank you. I'll turn it over to Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also, before I begin, Judy Thompson-Trojan from MML Liability and Property Pool, or better known as Meadowbrook, is here as well, if there are any questions or comments. As you can see, the premium cost of the $124,467 is actually a decrease of $3,808 from last year, so that's certainly a good thing, going in the right direction. And then also, this renewal would qualify the city to receive an annual dividend in the amount of $18,879. So again, we've been very pleased with their service and their coverage thus far, and so certainly do our best to answer any questions or take any comments that anyone may have.
Mr. Girbaugh filed by Councilmember Rhodes.
I was just curious, when I was looking through the coverage, it indicated that we have property damage for the cemetery property, up to $500 per headstone. How or what does that apply to, because I know we've had damaged headstones in the cemetery and so forth, or is it based on a natural disaster or something, or what would that be?
Potentially, if we were damaged...
Yeah, you can come to the podium, Judy. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. The headstone coverage covers property that the city doesn't own, as far as the headstone, so if you have liability coverage already, so if you are cutting the lawns or something in the cemetery and damaged somebody's headstone, you have coverage for that. But if there is damage to a headstone and there's no family, which is, some of the older cemeteries, you can't find family, so this provides you some coverage to keep your cemetery looking good, so that you can, $500 doesn't buy much of a headstone, it basically just is a marker, but it does give you, allow some money to replace some markers, so that, you know, if there's some kind of disaster. It would have to be from a covered cause of loss, like a storm, or something that actually damaged the headstone, so vandalism, something like that.
What's our minimal amount that we can claim? I mean, what is our cutoff, like a deductible or so forth?
Well, it only gives you like $500 per headstone, so...
Per headstone, but I mean, in the event, do we have to come up with $25,000 worth of expenditures or something like that? I'm just curious to know what our minimal, or is it full coverage to 100%?
Well, it gives you coverage for the headstones that you have, and there's a, I don't remember offhand how many we put on the application, but you have coverage for all of them.
Okay. No, because we've had some, no deductible is what I'm saying. So there's no deductible?
There's, I think it's a $250 deductible.
I was just curious, because we potentially have had some damaged ones that I think could cover, so, interesting. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, it's $500.
$500, okay.
Yes. But then it gives you, it gives you up to 500, so say you wanted to go higher than 500, there's a deductible of 500, but if you had several of them that were damaged, your deductible would be 500, but then you have 500 per headstone.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Nothing further, Mr. Girbaugh?
Nope.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rhodes?
I'm not sure who to thank for the fact that our premiums keep going down. I don't know whether it's our city staff or...
Staff.
Our residents...
Staff does a great job.
Whomever, but not only is it going down this year, but it went down last year, as I recall.
Staff is doing a great job.
My thanks to whoever it is that's administering this.
I can explain the dividend really quickly. That's a return of surplus, and by being in the pool, the pool has to collect so much for premium to make sure we have enough to pay claims, but any surplus is owned by the members, so that surplus is returned in the form of a dividend. And the board, when they met in September of this year, they voted to give a dividend for next year, so you'll get another dividend next year as well. So it's for all returning members, that, members that remain in the pool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I think I read that for the past four years, there's been a dividend, and the upcoming next-year dividend will be about equal to 1/4 of what has been given back for four years, so it's going to be pretty similar.
It'll be close. It depends, it's based on the prorated premium, so since your premiums are going down, your portion might be a little bit less, but it should be in the ballpark. I can tell you what it's been for the last couple of years. Two years ago, it was $17,123. Last year, it was $21,284, and then this year, $18,879. So it's been in the ballpark.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? No? Well, I want to thank you for being here, and, you know, the liability pool, as well as MML's workman's comp, is not only regionally recognized, but nationally as well, so, you know, keep up the good work, and also compliments to staff for all their efforts as well. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate your continued membership and loyalty. Thank you.
Yeah, please, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make mention, it was brought up, I believe, by Mr. Rhodes last year, the question about the dam insurance, dam coverage, and we do, as you, we do have that now, so we work with them, and we have a rider for that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here this evening. Is there anything further? No subsequent discussion? It's been properly moved by Councilmember Burgoyne, seconded by Mayor Protam Tahr, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business, item 14-203. This is a request to waive tax, tax bill late fees at 494 North Maple Road. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 1, 2014 memo from City Treasurer Bennett, and the September 9, 2014 letter from Dennis Michaelak of Meridian Partners, requesting the waiver of tax penalty and interest on real property taxes at 494 North Maple Road.
Motion to acknowledge receipt.
Thank you. Mr. Burgoyne, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Sibyl Koenig. Does anyone from staff, Ms. Bennett, do you care to comment on this at all? I know the one question that was raised at the last meeting that our city clerk might be able to comment on, and I believe it was brought up by Mr. Roth, was when we had made the changeover from originally enumerating a motion that allowed us to approve or deny, and simply changing it to acknowledging receipt. Did you do a little research on that?
I did do some research on that, and actually, that was, comes back to when I started here, and I took out the second motion, so I, when I was going back through history, it showed that we did acknowledge it, and then council made a decision either to accept or deny. And I, in my beginning, I did not know that that was something that we added to the agenda, so I left that out, so...
Okay, okay. That's helpful. I think at the last meeting, it was Mr. Burgoyne and perhaps myself. I actually prefer it this way. There's nothing to prevent a member of council from offering a subsequent motion to approve the request to waive the penalty and interest, but, you know, it's not my prerogative, it's council's. If you would prefer to have us enumerate the second motion, we will certainly have the clerk do so. If not, if I hear no objections, we'll proceed in this manner. Okay, I hear no objections. Is there any discussion regarding the motion to acknowledge receipt? It's been moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Sibyl Koenig. No? Then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to 14-204. This is a request to waive tax bill late fees at 724 Pembroke Drive. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the October 1, 2014 memo from City Treasurer Bennett, and the September 15, 2014 letter from Julie Ingram, requesting waiver of tax penalty and interest on real property at 724 Pembroke Drive.
Motion to acknowledge receipt.
Thank you, Mr. Burgoyne. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Girbaugh? Thank you, sir. Staff care to make any comment? Ms. Bennett? No? Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Mr. Burgoyne?
I want to point out for the audience that when we acknowledge receipt, we're just looking at the issue, we're not approving any refund or waiver of the tax bill. I've had a couple of people say it's unclear on TV what we're doing. We're not waiving it, we're just looking at it, we're just acknowledging receipt.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Burgoyne. There's nothing further? No? It's been properly moved by Burgoyne, seconded by Girbaugh, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And the last action item of the evening is new business item 14-205. This is URS Road Diet Traffic Study. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 3, 2014 letter from Sean Kelch, Kelch, excuse me, of URS, and to approve or not to approve the Traffic Engineering Service from URS, excuse me, in an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Just to acknowledge receipt, Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roth. Do you want to start us off on this?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was discussed at the last council meeting, reference to the road diet, and just for a quick summary, that MDOT, this is in reference to the 2016, the pending 2016 US-12 reconstruction project in Celine, and the question came up about the possibility of MDOT considering a road diet reducing the number of lanes throughout the project area. And so one of the requirements of MDOT is that the community making the request is required to do a traffic study to present data, so they can help analyze that and see if that's feasible. And so that's what we have here from URS. Mike DeVries is here in the audience, and be happy to make, take comments and questions and give you feedback, so that's, and so that's the question before council. Oh, sure, sure. And then also, you may recall, I mentioned earlier last week, we, the state of Michigan, MDOT awarded additional road funding to communities throughout the state because of the tough winter last year, and so Celine's portion, again, I believe it was in six installments throughout the year, but it's equivalent to $49,016.64, I think, that is addition to our current revenues, and so one thought would be potentially to use $15,000 of this money that we will be receiving from MDOT, this additional revenue, to pay for that study if council wanted to go down that road.
Would you care to comment, and then we'll open up for questions from the dais?
Yeah, we put together a scope of work, which dated September 3, which was mentioned already, I think, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review it, hopefully you have, but as I already mentioned, this is a standard process that MDOT would go through to change the cross-section of a road, particularly if you're going from a higher capacity to a, what would be perceived as a lower-capacity road, reducing the number of lanes. MDOT is cognizant of the fact that that might potentially create backups if it's not studied, and so that's the reason why Michigan DOT is asking that the study be completed. We've done a couple of studies like this in the past. This MDOT takes communities' requests seriously for implementing road diets, and we've looked at them along US-12 and Sturgis, where it's been implemented, US-127 Business Route in St. John's, where it's been implemented, and a few other locations, and so I'm happy to take any questions that you might have on the scope of work as it's written.
You have any questions? Mr. Burgoyne?
The west end of town will, population will grow, so, and in fact, there are subdivisions right now that are in the pipeline and will be approved. So how does your study, and I've seen from Gary Robel, some discussion that road diets are appropriate in the 10,000 to 15,000 vehicle-per-day range, and with a study and with enhancements or some type of benefits, could be considered towards the 20,000 range. And I saw a figure out there that MDOT had at 25,000 now, and if that grows from that, how does that fit in with what you're studying? How does the future growth fit in with what you're studying?
Yeah, we've been asked to look at, you know, converting, doing an analysis as, if you're pretending to convert it tomorrow, you know, what are the volumes tomorrow, or today or tomorrow, and running that under a three-lane kind of a scenario. And we're also been asked and tasked with looking at the future. In MDOT, they have a lot of, they got a lot of background traffic data, historical growth information, they've already determined a growth rate, they've asked us to look at it as a 10-year horizon, so up to the year 2024, and I believe it's a 3/4 of a percent per year growth rate, which is what we're going to be applying to the existing volumes we're going to be applying to the existing volumes that we'll collect. And we'll run that through the traffic analysis software that we use to sort of simulate what a 2024 scenario might be. I mean, it's a lot of crystal ball, as you can imagine, and nobody really knows what the growth is going to be, but MDOT has a lot of good socioeconomic data in the Washtenaw County area that they use to help determine what would be a reasonable growth rate.
Mr. Burgoyne, did you have anything further, sir?
No.
No? Thank you. Let's go to Mr. Councilmember Rhodes and then Councilmember Roth.
Yeah, thank you. You know, in my previous comments about this, I've used the term road diet, and while I still sort of hope that that's perhaps what we end up with, what I'm really more interested in is a complete streets approach and some approach that calms the traffic, whether that's road diet or something else. I'm willing to take input on that. But I did look at some traffic counts from MDOT themselves, and over the last ten years, with the latest traffic count being in April twenty-first of this year, there's actually been a ten-point-five percent reduction in traffic counts on Michigan Avenue in our town. And so, I would take issue with their point seven-five annual growth rate that MDOT has said you need to use. I don't believe that's a legitimate growth rate at all. There probably will be some more development on the western side of our town, and it may well be that that additional development offsets the reduction that's occurred over the last ten years, that trend. And so, maybe a more appropriate annual growth rate is zero, as Oakes too. But whatever we authorize and whatever kind of a study, I think it needs to be, include something more than this point seven-five.
Yeah, the latest data that we have is from two thousand and nine. MDOT did a study to optimize the signal timings along US twelve through Saline and collected data back then. That's what I have on file at our office. And back then...
Four twenty-one, twenty-fourteen.
Lots of information. Back then, that was, I think the volumes were twenty-one thousand cars a day near Ann Arbor Street, which is the highest volume point in the city. And I just got on MDOT's website today to look at other data that they've collected since then, and I've also seen that the volumes are on the order of twenty to twenty-one thousand cars a day. So, I haven't seen a lot of growth in the last few years.
Okay. I wanted to bring that point up. And then, from the Federal Highway Administration, they evidently publish a magazine every couple of months, and so their September, October issue of 2011, they talked about road diets that had happened in various places around the country. And one that they cited was in Athens, Georgia, on a road that had a twenty thousand average daily total, and resulted in crashes going down fifty-three percent. So, traffic diversion, they said, was less than four percent. So, that means people trying to find another way to go. And forty-seven percent of the users perceived the number of lanes and the street width as just right. Another thirty-three percent were unsure, and twenty percent were unhappy with the changes. And there's also a national report that came out. TRU sent a copy of it out, and it talked about that report showing that the widening of I-94 is not supported by data because of declining traffic. And I got an email today that says that Kalamazoo is considering a road diet on their Michigan Avenue in their downtown. So, we're not alone in asking MDOT to look at and evaluate a road diet. And then I happened to have a conversation with a researcher at MEDC over the weekend, and that person mentioned something that I had not even thought about before, and actually a couple of things, but one was the autonomous vehicles that are out there on the horizon, and they're going to be around at some point in time. And that will allow more vehicles in shorter span of time and space to move forward. And then the other one, which has really surprised me, but when you think about it, three-D printing. And this person, this researcher, believes that the advent of three-D printing, particularly the movement towards being able to print metallic parts, may very well end up with more parts being built at the site that they're actually needed, and therefore reduce vastly the number of trucks that are on the road as they move things back and forth. So, that was kind of interesting, exciting. And then the last thing is, didn't come from the researcher, but that I thought of, and that is, we, it seems very likely they were going to move towards some kind of public transportation system here in Saline, or probably purchase some of that services from AATA at some point. And then, again, will reduce the number of vehicles on the road. How much? I have no idea. So, anyway, while I continue to use the term road diet because it's kind of stuck in my head, what I really want to do is, if possible, come up with a way to make Michigan Avenue a calmer, more pedestrian-friendly route that doesn't cut our town into...
Right. Yeah, and certainly, road diets, that's one of the main benefits, is to make the community more walkable. With the roadway width that you have out there right now, if it were to be reconstructed with the curbs where they are and restriping it as a three-lane, you'd have an opportunity to implement bicycle lanes along the outside, potentially taking portions of the center turn lane that you would create and create medians, so people can cross. So, a lot of communities do. That's what Sturgis did when they redid their section of US twelve. I will say that the average daily traffic, you know, twenty thousand plus cars a day, that's, I'm not sure if I can think of an example where MDOT has converted a road of that volume. It's interesting, we just did a similar conversion of Eighth Street in the city of Traverse City, which there's very limited east-west mobility in Traverse City, Eighth Street being one of them. And it's very highly seasonal, and so we just, they're going to be reconstructing Eighth Street here in two years, and should we reconstruct it as the four-lane undivided road that it is now, or should we reconstruct it as potentially a three-lane? And so, they decided to take this old pavement that's out there and restripe it as a three-lane as a sort of practice run at it. And the volume on Eighth Street is, that we collected the week before the new pavement markings were installed, was just under twenty thousand cars a day. So, you could potentially call somebody at the city of Traverse City and talk with, you know, how they feel. Eighth Street is operating now that it's gone from twenty thousand ADT in four lanes to twenty thousand ADT in a three-lane pavement. Coming up later in October, we're going to be collecting traffic counts on Eighth Street in Traverse City to see whether or not traffic has reorganized itself and has gone away from Eighth Street and maybe increased traffic on other east-west thoroughfares.
Okay, thank you for that bit of information.
Mr. Roth?
I have a question as far as regarding your proposal, task number one, title, schedule, attend meetings, but it has itemized in one, two, and three, that URS will attend. Who's going to schedule these meetings? It just says you guys are going to be attend, but the main topic says schedule and attend. So, who's going to schedule?
Yeah, that would be something that we would work out with Gary Rubel and with MDOT as needed. You know, we are going to collect our traffic counts, we'll be doing our analysis. When we're ready to present something, you know, we'll get together with the city and show them what the preliminary results are. If it looks like the study is something that council wants to move forward with, and you end up going to a public information meeting, a public meeting is required per MDOT's checklist here, we would work with you to determine when, you know, would be a good time to have that public meeting, then URS would attend and prepare exhibits and things for people to look at and comment on.
So, a public comment meeting will definitely happen?
I guess that would be up to you. If through the results of the study, their MDOT says there's no way we're going to do this, you know, because of this, this, or this reason, or if the council decides that they don't want to move forward, then maybe you don't need to seek public comment. But if it looks like the council and MDOT say this is a good idea and we're willing to consider it, then one of the checklist items is you have to have public comment.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Tahar, and then we'll go back to Mr. Burgoyne.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of specific questions and then also some comments. First is about the data collection. My understanding from a couple of sources is that MDOT already has the data, and Mr. Rhodes referred to data as current as April of this year. So, my question is, what's different about what would be collected now? Why would it need to be collected as opposed to simply using the data already available and analyzing?
Sure, that's a good question. The data that MDOT has on file that's new are road tube counts, where you put a road tube across the road, and you're able to determine what the volume is over a twenty-four-hour period. In order to analyze a five-lane to, or four-lane to three-lane conversion, you have to study the signalized intersections in particular, because those are the choke points, those are the places where you could have a bottleneck. And to study those appropriately, you have to collect peak hour turning movement count data. So, at the intersection of, at Ann Arbor Street, we need to know how many are turning left, how many are going through, how many are turning right, because the mix of that traffic has a big impact on whether or not it works okay. And the latest data that MDOT has on turning movement count data at these four signalized intersections in the study area is two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine. So, they don't have new peak hour count data, which is what our scope of work calls for us to collect.
Okay, thank you. And then, if I can continue? Okay. So, to echo something Mr. Rhodes has already mentioned, I also felt that I would like to see more explanation and justification for the MDOT's growth rate projection. I, without further explanation and justification, I feel that we're designing for old days and old ways and not really factoring in looking forward to what might be coming in the next ten to twenty to thirty years. I mean, this, I think it's important that we look forward, Mr. Burgoyne also alluded to this in a slightly different way, but I think the issue of automated vehicles, which is very intriguing to me, came up. I also coincidentally actually had a conversation with the same MEDC researcher over the weekend that Mr. Rhodes mentioned. This was not completely unplanned, but, and I've been intrigued by the idea anyway. And so, I've looked into it a little bit, and research and projections by experts estimate that automated vehicles, even ten percent of the cars on the road would significantly decrease traffic congestion. So, I'd be interested in knowing if MDOT's projections include any sort of factoring in of that kind of information. And I think, I just, since Mitch is in the audience here, I'll mention, this is completely relevant in Saline because research and development of self-driving vehicles is happening right now in Washtenaw County, and actually, in Saline, Quantum Signal, as we know, this year received the first manufacturer plates under the new Michigan Automatic Vehicle Testing Law. So, this is real for us, and I would like to see that kind of thing taken into account as well. We talk about millennials not driving as much in the future, even in new areas where they might live. Is that taken into account? And even if we don't believe millennials are going to move to Saline, the aging baby boomer population is going to age out of driving. So, once again, I think the, looking at, even if we have population growth, doesn't necessarily mean that there will be traffic growth. So, I'd like to have more information about that. And finally, just a general comment, I mean, three-lane conversion or road diet is one of many tools, and I don't want for a minute to abandon that as a possibility. But there are a myriad of traffic coming measures, complete street measures, and pedestrian safety measures. Mr. Roth gave us information about pedestrian crossing signals that he thought might be useful in Saline. So, I would like us to focus on what it is we want to improve about, if you'll pardon the expression, the Michigan Avenue experience for everyone, including the driving public, but also the bicycling pedestrian public. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Mr. Burgoyne?
Yes, thank you. Are you taking into consideration the possibility of an off-street path, ten-foot path, replacing the sidewalks along the cemetery and coming up to Benny's Bakery from the west side, using enhancement funds or whatever they're called these days, and county recreation funds? The idea being to have families actually have a path off the roadway. So, in your thought process, do you include that in your thought process?
You're talking a pathway for people to walk?
Non-motorized.
Non-motorized?
A regular ten-foot, non-motorized connection to the west side.
Certainly, that's something that can be looked at. It's not, I don't think that's a specific item in our scope of work in terms of looking at the traffic impact vehicularily. I think that's the big thing that the department, MDOT, wants us to examine.
So, that's the next step. What I'm talking about would be in the next step.
I would think so.
Okay. Second question. Of course, you must be familiar with the overall MDOT traffic counts for the state as a whole, where they have east direction, west direction, total counts. Right? So, I looked at the historical counts, I did this about a month ago, and it turns out that the counts went up to a peak around two thousand and three. They stayed fairly high through two thousand and seven, and with the Great Recession in two thousand and eight, they dropped statewide fifteen to twenty percent. And I looked at the MDOT data for Saline, and it was the same thing. The traffic counts were like twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, came to two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, dropped to twenty, twenty-one thousand. And then I looked in two thousand and nine through two thousand and thirteen, which MDOT has here and there. And usually, one way, they have like twelve thousand this way, thirteen thousand this way, adds up to twenty-five thousand, so. And those rates rebounded to about twenty-three to twenty-six thousand. And this is between Domino's Pizza and Wellers, basically.
Yeah.
So, have you looked at all of this so far, or you haven't gotten to it yet?
Well, our scope is to collect new traffic volumes, and what we plan to compare is looking at, like I've mentioned before, the thing that we need to analyze is at the choke points, which are the traffic signals. So, we need to get good peak hour traffic volume information. It's the peak hours that are going to be, potentially experience the backups. So, we're collecting seven to nine a.m., eleven a.m. to one p.m., and two to six. That's MDOT's standard eight hours of data collection on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, a weekday. And so, we plan on comparing that data to the last time MDOT collected that same type of peak hour turning movement count data, which, as I've referenced before, was in two thousand, I think it's two thousand and eight or nine, I can't remember what year. And I would anticipate that those volumes are probably a little bit higher now, because, as you say, we're coming out of that Great Recession.
Right. I saw for Saline that the average, the number, total number of cars per day went up to about twenty-four thousand before two thousand and eight, and about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand afterwards, and dropped about twenty, twenty thousand in two thousand and eight. So, if they did it in two thousand and eight, they did it during a drop.
That's right. Yep. Yep, they did it during a drop. And I would anticipate that the data that we collect later this week, if the project gets approved or next week, I would anticipate that the volumes are higher than what it was back in two thousand and eight. And we'll use that data as our baseline, and if we use a growth rate of point seven-five percent, point five percent, zero, whatever it might be, that we all determine is the best rate, then we'll be looking at a 2024, you know, growing that out for ten years to account for that potential traffic growth.
Please, Mr. Burgoyne.
On the growth rate, in Saline, we have about three thousand residences, roughly. And there was a time in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, that we had a hundred and twenty-five new houses a year. Then it dropped to about two a year in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. And it has not really rebounded, although in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, the developers are knocking on the door and they really want to get going again, and they want to do it at the west end. So, I anticipate that we may have fifty new houses per year, roughly, because we've been between almost nothing to about a hundred and twenty-five. So, I think fifty is kind of a middle number. And on three thousand, that's one and two-thirds percent. So, I actually think your three-quarters of a percent may be low, because most of the growth is next, will be next to Torwood in that area, which means there's only one bridge. Usually with road diets, what you have is, you might have less use if people scatter, but you can't scatter from Wellers because you only have one bridge.
Right.
You can't scatter your vehicles. You can't scatter your vehicles.
Right.
So it's, are you taking into account that people cannot easily find other routes?
Well, that's a real difficult thing to consider without using some very expensive and complicated, you know, dynamic modeling of where traffic would go in terms of trying to find the path of least resistance. So really, that's going to have to be, you know, more of an engineering judgment.
MDOT-type of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a really, really complicated thing. Even if, you know, we took the 2009 numbers, and I just did a quickie analysis, and you know, the area at Ann Arbor Street is going to be a choke point. It's going to be, I mean, you see backups there in the afternoon peak, all the way back to Harris, I think. And that's with two lanes going westbound. If you go down to one lane, you can imagine what the impact might be. So whether or not it's a half a percent growth, or a quarter of a percent, or 1%, any growth to the existing volumes, I think is, you know, just going to, would make it larger. You know, the Ann Arbor Street signal has three phases to the traffic signal, because it's got poor sight distance on the vertical curve, so you've got the left turn phases there for eastbound and westbound left turns. If those could potentially be removed somehow, in some way to make the Ann Arbor Street signal a two-phase signal, like it is at Monroe, like it is at Harris, you would potentially have the ability to take out that main bottleneck. Because the more phases you have in a traffic signal, the more delay that you create. So I anticipate that would be one of the things that we might look at, is trying to examine closely that potential Ann Arbor Street bottleneck.
But you'd have to reroute cars to take out that?
Well, we would first do it without rerouting anybody, and see what the impact were, what the impact was, without rerouting anybody. Here's the traffic there today, whatever the growth rate is that we decide, what's the impact if you don't reroute anybody? And if the, you know, if the backups are untenable, then we might say, okay, well, let's take a look at, you know, maybe there's a 5% diversion of traffic that uses another route.
Anything further, Mr. Begoyne? No? Okay. Just remind colleagues that the motion that's on the table is just to acknowledge receipt. So right now, I'm looking for questions for the applicant. We can discuss, obviously, the merits of the proposal if a subsequent motion is offered. But I believe Mr. Girba had his hand up.
Just a couple of things. When you're looking at the assessment, would we be studying speed and coordination of lights through town? Because right now, we have multiple speed limits, multiple lights going off in different intersections. If it was to be made clear that, once you hit town and come through, and actually a better system that was put in place, can you give any assessment of that, or is this not going to be part of the scope?
Well, whenever we, when MDOT went through and optimized the signal timings along US-12 through Celine several years ago, they take into account speed in order to, so you leave one signal, you attempt to try to arrive on green on the next signal.
But again, that was five years ago.
That's five years ago. So if speed limits haven't changed in those last five years, you know, the...
They have.
We would, okay, if speed limits have changed, then we would account for that in what we do.
If all increased.
Yeah, yeah, following the...
Not downtown, but...
So we would, in the study area, you know, from Maple to Monroe, we would take a look at if the speed limits have changed and how they've changed, we would account for that, no doubt.
Now, does this take into consideration the spread eventually when you're coming into town or out of town, where all of a sudden you hit Maple and it goes into five lanes? So I don't know how, and the issue is that it goes back to two lanes, which adds just to the whole backup throughout the entire town. So is this study just the scope of what traffic flows through Maple to Monroe Street?
That's right. It's going to be east of Maple to west of Monroe. So, you know, on the westbound side of things, what's coming in from, in towards Maple and then into the study area? Eastbound, it's the opposite. What's coming towards Monroe and then into downtown?
So this study will basically be based upon what we currently have and not dealing with what really needs to be happening, is expansion of 12 east of town, so.
Yeah. We had to draw a limit on the scope of work, so.
Well, no, I know, but it's this argument that we want to use this data towards that potential. That's where I see this, because I'm not sure how the road diet will work. But the other piece of it, any other aspect is coming out of this besides just this approach of a road diet and a complete street? We're not talking any other potential safety expectations or things that could potentially be done, even though if we keep the streets exactly the same way they are right now?
Well, you know, when you do a road diet, you have an opportunity to try to look at how can you increase safety. So this is where, you know, one of the selling points that you want to probably talk with the MDOT about is why this is a good idea, is to come up with some safety benefits, increasing the ease of pedestrians to cross US-12, which is sometimes considered to be a barrier. So MDOT would want to see those kinds of things looked at. So, you know, part of our scope of work here is to not just analyze it, but we also anticipate, you know, putting together a conceptual graphic overlaid on an aerial photograph of, you know, here's where the curbs would be, here's the bicycle lanes, maybe there's a good opportunity to put an island along US-12 right here for pedestrians to cross, maybe disallow a turn movement here. You know, that kind of stuff is part of what we want to look at.
But that'll be potential other alternates to just a road diet. The reason why I'm saying this is we do the road diet, you've identified these potential pieces. Are there some of these pieces that potentially could be implemented without doing the road diet? Or is this all going to be based upon a road diet?
Well, I would certainly think that if there's something that comes out of the study that can be applied to either a road diet, or that can be applied to no change in cross-section, and MDOT moving forward with reconstructing the road as it currently is, I would think MDOT would be happy to examine potential safety improvements that would apply both ways.
Okay. And that was kind of where I thought the scope of this study was going to kind of address part of that, too. So I just want to make sure that we're not just completely studying just the three-lane road diet, but also this potential for what we currently have, or what may be the potential aspect that MDOT's going to tell us. So if this is going to provide some of that, I'm for it. The only other question I have is the funding. I just want to understand, are we the city paying for it, or do we have potential revenue coming from somewhere else, as we had discussed at the previous meeting?
Sure. Mr. Campbell can address both your questions, or Mr. Girba?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, the funding. Prior, as I mentioned about the additional MDOT funding for the roads that came in, prior to that, this was an unbudgeted item that we were going to, we would have to take out of our current budget allocation.
So Watts doesn't have any funding or anything like that?
I'm sorry?
Watts doesn't have any funding for us, or Semco or any of those?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the other safety items, those, we've been in discussions with MDOT well be, I mean, a few years ago, in regards to the, I think it was '06, '07, the Quinn Evans study that was done with the traffic islands and those types of things. Those are absolutely, we've been in discussion. They, MDOT so far seems to be very interested in, or in agreement with us in some way, shape, or form for those types of things. So I just bring that up, because that is, while it's slightly different, I mean, they could work together, kind of a hand in glove, if you will, but we have been working with MDOT for those specific purposes already.
I just want to make sure that those are still current with whatever potential new things that come up, because things get developed, and just like the crosswalks are in place in Stadium over in Ann Arbor and some other things, that we are looking at all those together, regardless of where we are, not using eight-year-old data or whatever.
Absolutely.
Additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Roth?
I was wondering, when you're doing this study at the main four corners, US-12 and Ann Arbor Streets, if you can get a head count of people crossing.
Yeah, we would collect pedestrian data, too.
So you have pedestrian data along with the car data?
Yeah, we count the cars and pedestrians, crossing all different legs and what direction they're going.
Now, those numbers are, I think, very important.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Begoyne?
One thing that's important to us is having a better connection between North Ann Arbor Street and South Ann Arbor Street for pedestrians, better safety. So in terms of that, we already have a countdown signal, and a couple of other types of devices at signalized intersection was the HAWK and the leading pedestrian interval. So I'm wondering whether, as you look at this and think about the design, and because these things take a little time, you know, if you put a pedestrian signal, that gives the pedestrians a leg up, you know? But on the other hand, it might slightly take a second or two off from the traffic. Do you consider safety improvements like that in your thought process?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. MDOT has noted the benefits of things like pedestrian countdown timers and leading pedestrian signals, things like that. They, they're actually pretty proactive in trying to incorporate that and work with cities to install that kind of stuff.
Is that in your study? Will your study think about that, or it doesn't really?
I think in an ancillary way it will. I mean, where there's opportunities where we think that would make sense at these locations, we would certainly consider making those types of recommendations.
Mr. Rhodes, question?
Councilmember Girba asked a question about traffic lights, signal lights, and you mentioned a couple of times that that's the choke point. And that's what traffic lights cause the congestion. And you talked about timing having been optimized, even though it's been a number of years ago. But I'm assuming that timing has to mean, means that how long a light stays green, say, on Michigan Avenue, longer than it stays green on Ann Arbor Street, Cross Streets. But what about the synchronization of traffic lights, so that if a person starts at one end of town and they follow the posted speed limit, and they can actually move through the entire town without having to stop? Because right now, you can't do that, no matter what speed you do.
Yeah, and that's certainly something that would be incorporated into our simulation modeling that we do. We use a, MDOT requires a simulation model software called Syncro, where you account for what the speed limit of the road is, so you have an idea of how, what the speed is of cars that are wanting to progress through the system. And you determine how far away the signalized intersections are, so that you know when the light begins green here, and the next intersection, it should begin green at this point to allow that kind of progression. We'd certainly account for that. There's always challenges with it, though. If signals are not spaced at regular intervals, if one signal is a two-phase signal where it's just green one way and green the opposite way, but the next signal has three phases to it because it has left turn phasing, those kind of things always throw monkey wrenches in our ability to provide the progression that everybody wants. Sometimes, it's not even possible to maintain the progression that you want because of those types of things.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that you're going to consider that. Thank you.
Hopefully, we can wrap up these questions in just a moment. I guess one of the detriments of going last is that most everyone has addressed or articulated the good questions. But one quick one for you, because it came up during the public comment period, and actually, this was discussed when staff and I had a conference call with MDOT about a month ago, the air quality issue. I know that's probably something that your company cannot evaluate. But if we decide to move forward, who would be the appropriate entity to engage on that front?
Well, our company has the ability to evaluate air quality. We didn't include it in this particular study, because Washtenaw County is a non-attainment area, so it's not part of MDOT's checklist.
Okay. Maybe I was confused, because I thought they brought that up when we had the conference call with them, that that was data that they would be interested in reviewing.
I think it came up for a topic of discussion, but I don't recall the direction it went.
Okay. So they're not going to, they're not going to hang their hat on that particular issue?
Right.
Okay.
It's my understanding of reading their road diet checklist, Washtenaw County's a non-attainment area, and so it's not required.
Can we confirm that? Because that's not my understanding, not to suggest that you're wrong, sir.
Sure.
I just, I left the conference call with a different understanding. Okay. Mr. Begoyne, did you have one last question, sir?
Actually, it's not a question. It's just a comment. If we get more money for excess snow, or because the state has more money to distribute for roads, that doesn't automatically put it in the budget. The council has to decide to spend it. But I would note, though, that I just saw the email to Mr. Girba showing that slide number five in the annual audit will show that we have 25%, a 25% figure there for fund balance. It will show that we have now exceeded our cash-on-hand target of 20%. So we actually have funds. It's not like we don't have funds, if we want to use them.
No. Let me be clear, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Certainly, I don't believe there's anybody suggesting we would not have funds to pay for this study had we not received the approximately $50,000 from MDOT, which evidently will come in installments. And, you know, as has been noted in the past, our fund balance is growing, but as you recall, from the fund balance policy that we adopted in 2013, there are a number of areas that we are strongly encouraged to invest in if our fund balance reaches a certain percentage. But your point is well-taken, and there certainly would be funding to accomplish this, if that's the consensus from council. There are no further questions. We appreciate your time very much. You gave excellent answers, I think it was very helpful. Is there anything further on this motion to acknowledge receipt? No? Okay. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by Roth, to acknowledge receipt of the September 3, 2014 letter from URS. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. At this time, I would seek a motion to either approve or not to approve the Traffic Engineering Service from URS in an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Move to approve.
Been moved by Mayor Protem Tahar to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Girba. Is there any discussion? Mayor Protem Tahar.
Yes. I came into this with some very big question marks, but I appreciate all the answers and the additional information we've been given, and I think that the, carrying out this study will be very valuable for us for a number of reasons, including assessing the viability of a road diet.
Mr. Girba, followed by Councilmember Rhodes.
Yeah, just to make sure, my support for this is really getting the data and the stats on here. I know we're looking at the road diet, but I really want to have the counts and all this other information that potentially will be more pertinent for us to use in the future on other needs and aspects that we have with US-12.
Mr. Rhodes?
The gentleman from URS mentioned the possibility of us deciding what annual growth rate. So I'd like to, I would support this if we have, if two growth rates can be applied. One is zero, which is basically the existing data that you collect, to compare against that .75 requirement.
And we can certainly do that. That's called the existing conditions analysis, which is already included in the scope. I'd just caution that, you know, MDOT is going to be the one to approve or not approve a road diet ultimately, since it's their road. And if the growth rate of .75% that's been given to us from MDOT is something different than .75, we would want to get MDOT on board with, you know, why that number should be different, because they're going to want to make sure they accept it.
Does anybody have any objections to gathering data on both of those?
Just real quick on that question. So the .75 is what you got from MDOT that's current now?
MDOT provided that growth rate, yep.
So, okay.
So when they, when the question started asking what needs to go into this road diet study, Lynn Kirby from the Brighton Transportation Service Center for MDOT said, well, we want a 10-year horizon, so look out to 2024. And our planners have looked at this area, and they recommend using a 0.75% annual growth for those 10 years.
Is there any objection, Mr. Begoyne?
Yes, I do have an objection in two ways. First, I think 10 years is too short. I think that you don't rebuild the road every 10 years. So I think that's too short. It should be 20 years. And I don't mind having the zero on the one hand, but on the other hand, I'd like to have something realistic, like 1 and 1/2% or so. So those are what I think is reasonable. I think you don't build, MDOT's not going to come and rebuild that road more often than 20 years. And I do think that the growth will mostly be at the west end, and it will mostly be between 1 and 2%. So I think if you have the 0% on one hand, you should have maybe a percent and a half on the other hand.
Mr. Rhodes?
I've just mentioned that the letter from URS actually specifies 2035 for the future year projection, so unless that's changed, that's...
I think that's a typo, because I think there's other references in there to 2024, which I think is, I think that's the accurate one.
But that's the MDOT standard. They're asking us to look out 10 years.
10 years.
Okay. And that's the data they're interested in reviewing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, that's too short for us.
I don't necessarily disagree, but at the same time, that's what they're going to be interested in looking at.
There's no problem going to do a 2034 analysis and going on 20 years. It would just be more work on our part to, you know, run, crunch all those numbers.
Does it increase the cost of the analysis?
It would increase the cost, yes, because that's a, we're looking at two scenarios, that would make it three scenarios.
Well, you're looking at, now going 10 years out, going 20 years out, and then also looking at conceivably one or, well, one, two, or three growth rates.
Our scope of work has an existing conditions and analysis, and then a 10-year horizon at .75%. So if we look at a 10-year horizon at .75, plus a 10-year horizon at something else, I mean, that's an additional analysis. If we look at 10-year horizon at .75 as scoped, plus 20-year horizon at whatever growth rate, that's just additional numbers that we got to generate and analysis that we have to do.
Okay. So again, the motion that's been offered... So again, the, the motion that's been offered by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by Gearba, is obviously for the proposal that's in front of you at 15,000. Obviously, as the, the gentleman articulated, we can ask for additional data, but we'd have to come back and probably approve an additional amount.
That's correct.
Okay. We can certainly do that, but.
Well, and the 0% is actual anyway, so that's part of it.
You're getting the existing conditions, or if you like to call it 2024 at 0% growth, you're getting that for free.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Now, I would just, you know, echo some sentiments that were expressed by Mr. Gearba. I think there is going to be some valuable data that's collected here, obviously that's applicable as it relates to a road diet, but I think will be valuable on a host of, of additional initiatives that we, as a city, may pursue in the future. And just to clear up a little bit of confusion, because it still seems to persist and linger, we are simply at the point of gathering data. I don't think anybody on council has, has advocated for any type of particular change. We just need the information so we can move forward in, in a strategic and meaningful way. But as has been articulated far more eloquently than, than, than by me, by Mr. Rhodes and a number of other council members, this is going to have a profound impact on our community for 20, 30, 40 years. So we need to think seriously and critically about it, and that's why I think that this analysis is important. Mr. Begoyne.
Since it will impact us for 20, 30, and 40 years, I think our analysis should be for 20, 30, or 40 years. I don't think the road will be reconstructed more frequently.
I don't have a problem with, with having staff engage with URS to, to see what it would cost to do maybe a 20 and 30-year analysis. Would other council members be interested in, in staff doing that? Or are we comfortable with just the 10 years? Mr. Rhodes.
I, I think projections out more than 10 years are so hazy that I don't think it's going to gain us anything.
All right. Mr. Roth.
I, I think his proposal is sufficient.
Okay.
And my thoughts are far as, I'm glad that it's going to be more than just plain road diet, and the information for safety, pedestrians, and so on is well worth the have.
Okay. Mr. Gearba.
That's why I moved it that way.
Saying yourself, okay. Mayor Protem Tahar.
Yes, 10 years. I think, as Mr. Rhodes also mentioned, looking out beyond that, there are too many things that we can anticipate that will be changing to, to project all that. And additionally, I think that growth on the western edge of town might be a certain percentage of growth, but the traffic that comes into Celine from the west is not just from the western edge of town. And so, growth on, I think the growth on the western edge of town is, is not going to be as, as large an impact as we might initially think.
Okay. Ms. Seibokanik.
Yeah, I believe 10 years is sufficient at this point.
Well, interestingly enough, Mr. Begoyne, you and I were of the same position, but we were on the losing side of this one, so. Is what it is. Is there anything further on, on this issue? No, but it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Tahar, seconded by Gearba, to approve the Traffic Engineering Service from URS in an amount not to exceed 15,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, and the motion carries six to one. We move on to the discussion portion of the agenda. Commission committee or task force reports from members of council. Mayor Protem Tahar.
I would just like to note, on behalf of the Arts and Culture Committee, that we are delighted that the project to move the Orange Risten bus to the outside of City Hall has been completed, and it looks really fabulous, thanks to everyone who contributed to that effort.
Does look very nice. Congratulations. Many years in the making.
Yes.
Is there any additional committee, commission, or task force reports? No? How about reports and other announcements? Ms. Seibokanik.
From the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce, we are planning now our dinner for the presentation of our annual business awards. And I don't know if I've announced those here or not.
I believe you have.
The chamber every year selects outstanding businesses, and this year, we are honoring in the small business category, Peters Building Company, and in the large business category, Key Bank. We're also awarding a lifetime achievement award to Robinson Bon Miller Funeral Home. And these are very prestigious awards within our community, and the public is invited to share in the presentation in honoring these businesses at dinner on Thursday, October 16th, be held at Stonebridge Golf Course. There is an online RSVP off the chamber website, clinechamber.org, or you can call the chamber office at 734-429-4494. I also want to state that the float or walking, marching entry form for this year's parade is now online on the chamber website also.
Ms. Seibokanik, what's the cost of the Business Enterprise Award?
Tickets are $38 per person, or $2.94 table of eight, and that is down from last year.
Okay, very good.
Hope people will come.
Excellent. Any additional reports or announcements? Mr. Gearba.
I was just going to say, we had a very successful event yesterday for Harvest Fest at the Rensselaer Farm. The mayor and the president of the society dedicated the new plaque recognizing the National Historic Registration for it, and, and basically in honor and memory of Christian, Cynthia Christensen. Is this?
Program Sunday.
Oh, you can mention that one. I don't know what, I don't know what the program is, I'm sorry. But as a result, we had approximately 300 people, and it was well attended for being so cold, but I really, the dedication of all the volunteers and the individuals that showed up to paint pumpkins and ride on the hayride was much appreciated.
It was a very nice event, minus the weather. So kudos to the society for organizing that. It was, it was, it was a very nice afternoon. Mr. Rhodes, did you have a comment, sir?
Well, I was wondering if Councilmember Roth was going to talk about the program that's coming Sunday?
Yes.
So you organized it?
Right. Sunday, 2:00 PM, at the Brecken Room in the Celine Area District Library. We will have our first, our second educational program, and it's going to be about old tool, tools that are not recognized, or may be no longer in use. And the gentleman will be making that presentation, and I just learned that he had moved into the city of Celine this past month or so.
Very good.
So he's being active with our historic society and great addition to our city.
Okay. If there are no additional reports or announcements, we have downtown parking and signs. Mr. Campbell, do you want to take this one with DPW Director Fordice?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I may recall, a few months ago, the discussion came up about whether to enforce or not to enforce parking in the municipal lots downtown. And what transpired was DPW Director Fordice, Chief Rink, and myself doing a, what I call a walkabout downtown to, to review those parking regulations in the parking lots, as well as on-street, and, and to check the signage, and whether it would be appropriate or not, or enough frequency to help folks navigate their way to and from the parking lots, or, or places to park downtown. And so, what came about was looking at different signage options, and also, we looked at, and Jeff, we'll get into more detail on this, but also looked at some potential other parking spaces, predominantly on-street parking, to, to evaluate that and see if that was a possibility or not, to add to additional parking in the downtown area. So that's, that's the results that Jeff will be presenting. Unless there's any questions or comments from me, I would be happy to turn over to Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Jeff, will you get your PowerPoint or slides up? It's all your, my friend.
I just hate it when everybody's standing there looking at you. My computer's not feeling like it's.
Okay. As Todd said, we reviewed the existing signs related to downtown parking, and reviewed the on-street parking situation. And I've come up with, we had a prior presentation that gave us, showed you guys the, the existing signage, both signage in the right-of-way and at the parking lots. And we've come up with this proposal. And there's also been discussion on, of course, enforcement. So there's some new sets of rules proposed in here for the parking lots, and then that enforcement decision would still have to, have to take place. The small red arrows on this map show the existing directional signage. These are standard MUTCD-approved parking signs, a large green P, and then spelling out the word parking with a directional arrow as appropriate. The majority of these signs are double-sided, so from, no matter which direction you're traveling, they provide that information to guide you to the, the parking lots. Changes to this setup that we're proposing this time would be, at the four corners, we have a photograph of one of those here. They're very high. We can bring those down lower. That should make them somewhat more visible at that high-traffic intersection there. And then also propose to replace all these signs with new signs. They're fairly old. They have lost most of their retroreflativity, so at night, they don't stand out all that clearly. So replace them with new, high-intensity reflective signs, be the same signs, same design, because that's what's allowed within the right-of-way, but they'd be more visible. There are a couple of other ones that need some tree trimming around them, but most of the other ones, there's not really any option for changing their position in their, in their current location. So the four, at the four corners, would be lowered. They would all be replaced. And then, just going back, you can see at parking lot two, there is not a, a guidance sign in the right-of-way, so we would add one at that location, a two-sided sign at that location.
Parking lot number two being.
Is that the northeast one?
That one. That's number two.
Northeast.
South. Right on the east.
Oh.
South Michigan.
Southeast.
Behind Max. Yes. And then, we have these existing regulation signs, you know, looked, looked good in their time, and they, most of them need some level of maintenance right now, but what we're proposing is to replace those with a, a simpler, more durable sign that looks like that. This would be the sign and the, the proposed regulations that would be used for parking lots one, two, and four. So behind Dan's, behind Max, and next to Benito's, behind Benny's. For those of you who can't seem to get the number of the parking lot straight. These signs are outside of the right-of-way, so we can do whatever we wish to with the design, based on some feedback from council, proposing this sign with the, the blue P, which is the, this is similar to the European parking symbol. And then, you know, a simple spelling out of which lot you're in, a four-hour parking limit between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM instead of the current three-hour, and then, you know, that applies Monday through Saturday.
Jeff, can, if people have questions, I don't have to, have to wait to the end. Mr. Begoyne's got a question.
Right. Seems to me when you drive by somewhere, and it's, let's say it's at night, and you see a parking sign like this, if it's well illuminated, you would, it would engrave in your memory, and you would remember that that's parking, you know? Is there, what illumination is there for this, this signage? Also, the other thing we had discussed, maybe you're going to come up with this a little bit later, is in case a parking lot is full, helping people to understand where else they can park.
Yep.
Maybe that's in your presentation.
That part's coming up later. But the lighting, at this point, I'm not proposing any specific lighting. These, these signs would be of a similar retroreflectivity material as, as a street sign, so.
Are they under lamps, under street lamps, or?
Yeah, I mean, they're all on lit streets. Parking lot one, of course, has the decorative lighting in there. Parking lot two would just be streetlights. Three would just be streetlights. The entrance to four, on Michigan Avenue, would have the decorative lighting. On the Henry side, would just have streetlights. And then, five was simply streetlights also. So we can work with the positioning of these so that they, you know, they catch the headlights. The new, the new reflective materials are pretty intense, and it does not take much of, of a side light from a, your set of headlights to, to really light them up. So they're quite a bit brighter than the old, old ones.
Yeah. I was thinking, you were saying these are in the lots. So as you're going by, your headlights will not be shining in the lot. So my question was, is there some illumination where people can actually see that there's parking that they're driving by?
Just the parking lot lighting? I mean, each of the light, each of the lots have, have lights. Now, you know, the entrance lighting at three is not particularly bright, but all of the other, all the lots are illuminated with specific parking lot lighting. How that'll hit these signs, I mean, we can certainly, the options for locations are fairly limited, you know, because you want them close to the entrance, you got, you got to be off the sidewalk, there's landscaping, there's other issues. So there's not too many, too many options on where we can place these, but we certainly take that in consideration, try to do our best with the existing lighting.
Ms. Seibokanik.
Jeff, how, how big are these signs? Do they compare with the ones you're taking down in size?
Yes. Yeah, they'd be approximately the same size, a little bit narrower and taller. But roughly about 30 inches tall. So again, this lots one, two, and four proposing to move to a four-hour limitation within those timeframes. There are other more remote lots, three and five, these would be the, the Water Tower Lot and the one behind Key Bank. Those are currently unregulated, proposing a no overnight parking regulation, essentially a 24-hour limit, so that these lots do not turn into vehicle storage places. You know, they're intended to provide for commerce and not storing of somebody's vehicle or equipment, so.
Mr. Begoyne.
Yeah, in terms of towing, I don't know if the police chief knows this, is there some advantage of saying no parking between 1:00 AM and 3:00 AM if you're towing during that time? Or if you simply say no overnight parking, then you can just go tow? Do you know? Because I've seen a lot of communities that say a specific time, not between 2:00 AM and 5:00 AM or something. I don't know if there's, there's a, one's better than the other.
Yeah. And we have a number of streets where we have parking regulations like that. You know, in the downtown area, that restriction, I, I think it's three to five, and that kind of relates to street sweeping, really. That's when we do street sweeping downtown, and we need, we need that cleared out. It also is helpful in the winter for, for snow clearance. But we do have another, number of other streets. I know Teft Court has, parking is allowed on either side, but not 3:00 to 5:00 AM. And I, I think it, it's related to this, you know, to not allow for vehicular storage on, on streets, parking. But I don't know specifically to your question about the rationale for towing, which is easier to tow from.
Mr. Gearba.
One reason I do like doing night parking gives advantage for individuals that, if I tow too much, their car will not be towed as a result.
Right.
It makes me drive up.
Yeah.
Give them at least a little bit.
Yeah.
It doesn't have any more, helps rolling up downtown.
Mm-hmm. Right. And, and this one also, as long as you can read that after you partake too much, after 6:00 PM, it is not a four-hour limit. It's, it's, you know, there's no limit after 6:00 PM until 8:00 AM rolls around. So as long as you get back by noon the next day, you're, you're good to go. This is the, the new location sign. It's, I'm not proposing lime green, but that's, that's how it's projecting. So in each of the lots, there would be at least one of these signs to let you know, you know, there'll be a "you are here" dot, and show you where all the other lots are. So in case you pull into lot number one and you cycle through there and it's full, you can see, it'll be a nice map towards the exit saying, hey, there's four other lots out there, go, go check them out.
Mr. Begoyne.
We also have quite a bit of street parking, and this doesn't really talk about. We also have quite a bit of street parking, and this doesn't really talk about street parking.
No. I kind of sketched up one that showed where there was available street parking, and it very quickly became a mess.
Excuse me?
Yeah, it was, I couldn't really, I'm not a graphic artist, but maybe, maybe one could come up with somebody, some way to do that. But with my graphic skills and sketching it out, it, I couldn't find a symbolic way to easily show where, where that was. You know, I started putting lines along the parking zones. And I think, for the most part, certainly along Michigan Avenue and north and south Ann Arbor, where the on-street parking is is pretty clear. There are some spots on Henry and McKay where the signage is a little bit confusing, and cleaning that up is also part of this proposal, so.
In terms of non-graphic, on the location sign, was there any thought given to putting words, but also indicating that there could be parking on the street, or where it's not disallowed, you're able to park on the street, or something of that nature? Because some people really don't know that there's street parking.
Although I would think that anyone traveling from a filled parking lot to another parking lot, if they see an empty street, empty parking spot on the street, they're going to take it.
They don't, they don't know it's allowed necessarily.
Well, yeah, I mean, the downtown, certainly on north and south Ann Arbor and Michigan Avenue, the on-street parking is marked. It's not just an allowed situation. There are individual spaces marked out on the street there. The parking along McKay and Henry is not marked out in individual spots. That's just a, an allowed thing. There's no, there's no painted parking lane there. So that, those are the spots where I think the signage can be cleared up a little bit, because there's, there's a combination of no parking, and there's loading zones from this hour to this hour, with the implication that you can park after that hour, but it doesn't clearly state that. And then there's, on Henry, there's a whole series of no parking here to corner, and then you go ten feet, and there's no parking here to the next sign, and then there's two signs ahead of you. So it's, it's a little bit confusing there. And there's a stretch along Henry where parking is allowed, and I've never seen anybody parking there. And I think it's because these signs are a little bit confusing, so that, I don't, I don't think I have a, I might have a slide coming up on that, but I don't know if that's specifically in here. But cleaning up those confusing restrictions are part of, part of the plan also. And then, on-street parking. In the past presentation, when City Manager Campell and Police Chief Rennick and I walked around, we found some spots where we thought, you know, hey, maybe we could squeeze in two more parking spaces here, or maybe we can do a whole extra side of the street. And at least on a, a quick review, there's a reason there's only one parking, there's parking on one side of the street right now, because they're not wide enough. To have a standard parking lane, two travel lanes, and another standard parking lane, you need thirty-six feet, and they're not thirty-six feet wide. So I have some kind of creative ideas in some spots where we might be able to get by with narrower travel lanes, or maybe only allow parking on both sides in the evening, or something like that, when traffic volumes are down, but restaurant volumes are up. So, but I have to look into the legality of that, whether or not we can really get by with a, kind of a, you know, a less than twenty-foot-wide two-way travel lane. I've seen it. I don't know if it's actually legit, but I've seen it in other...
Ann Arbor streets, basically.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, so basically, all of the spots that the three of us, just standing there looking at them, thought, hey, we could squeeze something in here. There's just not enough width to do it with standard parking and travel lane widths. And then there was another one on south Ann Arbor, where it looked like we could pick up two spots. But after evaluating that and going through the intersection a couple of times, I do believe it would create a sight-distance problem at Henry and south Ann Arbor, so not proceeding with that one.
I've seen in other cities, creating more parking, parking on both sides, but then the city turns out to change those into one-way, and that creates problems.
Yeah, I definitely...
I don't think we want to deal with one ways.
No, I would not propose one-way streets. Except Hall Street.
Anything else, Jeff?
That's, that's the extent of my proposal this time.
I think the signs look great. You know, the ones that are there now aesthetically are very pleasing, if you like that color scheme. I don't, by the way. But I don't find them to be particularly helpful, especially for those who are coming to patronize our shops or restaurants from out of town.
Right.
It's actually a large sign, but the verbiage itself is relatively small.
Yeah.
And I think the signs that would be placed in the lots, denoting the additional parking will be helpful. What is the rest of council think?
All your suggestions are great. I liked them. Didn't fault with any of them, so.
Thank you.
Matt and City Manager and Police Chief.
Ms. Seibokanik?
I agree. I also think that it really addresses a lot of the concerns that were brought up in the group meetings, and a lot of the comments that were heard and reflected here, which is really nice. Thank you.
Well, there's no objections, then. Oh, Mr. Burgoyne?
Yeah, I just want to say I agree with the comments that were made, that this is a very good improvement, and also look forward to improvements on the side streets in those, in that signage. But also, I'd like to ask that, before you place those signs in the parking lots, to actually view them with nightlight, so that you see where placing them will be helpful. I would suggest that.
The other thing I want to be very clear, because the signage that Jeff is proposing is changing the duration for some of the lots from three to four hours. Is that correct, Jeff?
That is correct, yeah.
I think that's preferable. I just want to make sure everyone's clear about that. No one has objections?
I agree.
Okay. Very good. Very good. We good then, gentlemen?
I feel good.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, sorry about that. So if there's nothing further on downtown parking and signage, we move on to the last discussion item, which was bonding for retirement costs. Mr. Burgoyne?
I don't want to go into a discussion on it. I just want to know, since we have a December deadline to take care of this, and it will have an impact on the city, I think we can save about $2 million safely. I think we need to consider it. It takes about, about six weeks or so for bonding to occur. So I'm just hoping we're not too hard against the deadline. That's all.
You want a comment, Ms. Seibokanik?
Just as an update on that information, we received the information back from MERS, and I have not confirmed it yet. I've sent an email out, but I do believe that that deadline has been extended. We're not under the December 30th.
Ooh.
I think there's legislation that was passed, but I will verify that. But we did just receive the information. I forwarded on, and it will be coming...
Could you email us to confirm that there is no December deadline?
Absolutely. As soon as I get confirmation on that, I'll let you know. But that, that was kind of the light at the end of the tunnel when that came through, so I think...
That's wonderful.
Yeah, I think, I'll verify that.
Can we, how soon do you think you'll find out about the deadline being extended?
I can, I'll rattle some cages tomorrow.
Okay. Maybe at the very latest. Todd, you could include it in your communicate, if it takes till Friday to receive something. If not, maybe send it out in advance. Would that be helpful?
Yep.
Mr. Burgoyne, please.
It's wonderful if it's been extended, but if it hasn't been extended, then we need to look at it.
Right, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll act accordingly if that extension hasn't been enacted. Probably something will come up at the next meeting. But hopefully, we'll be able to cite a specific date to which it's been extended to.
Yep.
Does that match? Okay. Very good.
Perfect.
Thank you. Anything further on that, Mr. Burgoyne?
No, thank you.
Yep. All right, then we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
I appreciate all the information as far as the new highway proposal study. What I was wondering, as far as the ordinances, I've went to a lot of the ordinance meetings, and I noticed that there's a lot of driveways that are being, the sidewalks are not being put in, they're asphalted. And when I asphalted my driveway years and years ago, I had asphalt in the driveway, asphalt in the approach, but the sidewalk had to be cement. And I noticed across from the funeral home, that presently is asphalt. I noticed as far as, I think, Phillips, and then with the nanoleum places or by rugs, they have a driveway that's just gravel. And the difference between the cement on my sidewalk, it's three inches deep, but on a driveway, it must be five inches deep. And asphalt, there is a difference, and I was wondering what the, if the ordinance changed, that you don't have to put a sidewalk in anymore, you just asphalt it over. And that's what I was wondering, as far as if that had been complied, or they had a variance not to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll definitely be sure to get you the information, Mrs. Seibokanik. There are additional public comments. No, then we have our next meeting on the 20th, with a work meeting beginning at 6:30 per policy to review the community events applications. Regular meeting at 7:30, then a work meeting on the 10th to discuss the 2014 Celtic Festival, and then a regular meeting at 7:30 PM. We have no absences this evening, so we can dispense with that. And if there's no other business to come before City Council this evening, which there is none, I would seek a motion to adjourn at 9:15 PM.
Motion to, I second it.
Actually, you spoke first, Mr. Burgoyne, so I'll let you be the mover. Was that Seibokanik who seconded?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So it's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting at 9:15. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned.